Do any indication? Thank you. Commissioner, we are live.
Behave yourself.
All right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I want to welcome everybody to this public meeting of the Board of Garrett County Commissioners on Tuesday, November the 16th, 2021. I want to thank everybody in attendance for coming and everybody online for tuning in. If everyone would please stand with me to recite the pledge and then Pastor Crowell will lead us in the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you bow your heads with me, please? Father God, during this time of year, we are most definitely thinking about a day of thanks that's coming up. We give you thanks now. We give you thanks for all that we have in our region. Give you thanks for the men that are serving as our commissioners and give you thanks for Senator Edwards and Delegate Biceau as well. We ask your blessing on all of them, Father, especially for the senator and delegate as they finish up their time. May you help them to finish well. Bless them, Father, bless the region through them, but also this entire region through the delegates that represent us as the commissioners. We thank you, Father. We ask you to give them wisdom, strength, and all that they need, and we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please be seated. Mr. Knoll, any additions, deletions, or changes to public meeting agenda?
No, sir, there are none.
Hearing none, we have motion approved the meeting agenda.
So moved.
Second, I'll second agenda approved by mutual consent. Everybody got a copy of the minutes in advance of the meeting? I'll make a motion to accept the minutes. Motion or minutes approved by mutual consent. Commissioner Heimball may be joining us later. He is currently representing us with the Rural Healthcare Network commitment that he has, so he's on a Zoom call right now in the back, and if he, if that wraps up, he will join us. First item of business on the public meeting agenda, we do have Tim Alesworth, the Executive Director of Local Government Insurance Trust, otherwise known as Legit, who is here to give us an award, which is wonderful, so come on up. And a check, even better. All right, all right.
With me today is Michelle Kepman-Durshie, she's our membership director. And before I get started, I'd like to compliment Vian Griffin and Joe Schroyer, the folks that applied for this grant from Legit. It's a NOVA four, it's a cyber protection program. We do it at our Legit office, and I think it was a great idea. In addition to that, a couple of other things I'd like to bring up before presenting the check is you all have, I wish all our members were as good, had as good experience as you all do, because you get about almost a 24% discount off your insurance premiums because you're good experience. And then we've done a, Legit is in a way to give back, has done a grant program for several years now, and I've been at Legit 12 years, and I think I've been here at least 10, nine or 10 of those years presenting checks, which I'm proud to say, since 2000, 1999, rather, you've gotten right at $60,000 back in grants and 19 times, so 19 different grants have been given. So with that, I'd like to present a check for $2,338. Let me see if I've got that number right. Yes and then, few left for, for this NOVA four cyber security programs. I'd like to present that.
If you want to actually come on up around back here and... Let's take you, rose between two thorns here.
Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you for having me. And thank you for having me first.
We're driving fast. It's a long drive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, Davina, anything you guys want to say?
I know I'm putting you on the spot here.
Yeah, no, we're, you know, very appreciative of what we did for offering this to us. It has been very successful. This is the third year that we retained the brand for the NOVA four program. And last month, we had 276 test messages go out. The first month, we had 100% compliance, nobody clicked on any, on any bad ones. So it definitely works. We're going to work on our end now to make things a little more difficult, but it is, it's a very good program, and we wouldn't be doing it without.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And thank you for belonging to Legit, most of all. Hope to see you at the Make-up Conference next month.
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Okay, this is our annual legislative meeting, and I do want to welcome Senator Edwards and Delegate Biceau, thank them for coming. This will be our last one of these with, with you guys in the positions that you're in, so I will echo Pastor Crowell's remarks and thank you, guys, for all of your years of service officially here on behalf of the county. Mr. Knoll, we have some legislative requests. I think everybody got, you guys got a copy of that, and I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you, gentlemen. We have a couple primarily housekeeping issues we'd like to have addressed this legislative session. The first one is Article 12 titled Garrett County, Section 20-3. It has to do with the public meetings for the county commissioners, and COVID has certainly put a challenge on how we meet, and so we'd like to have the code changed so the commissioners, basically so the county commissioners show me in public session as necessary, and public sessions may be in person or via video broadcast. That changes the code from weekly to as necessary, and that the commissioners will make every effort to attend the meetings as scheduled. So in order to enact that, we need a change at the state level. The second change we are requesting is Title 14, subsection eight of Collections, Part Three of Tax Sales. This has to do with Section 14, 813, and it's Notice of By Advertising Expenses, Expense Lean on Property. This is, this is a three-page section. I'm not going to read this section, but if you turn to the third page of that section, basically under section, dealing with auctioneer fees, the auctioneer fees following paragraph one of this section shall be, and section five of that did read in Garrett County, Somerset County, NY Coman County, $8 for each property sold. That's the current law. We would like to strike Garrett County from that section. And if you go down to the following section, number seven, it says in Baltimore, number, I'm sorry, number nine. Currently, it says in Caroline County, Hartford County, Howard County, Prince George's County, and Tolbert County, $10 for each property sold. We would like to have Garrett County added to that, so it would read in Caroline County, Garrett County, Hartford County, Howard County, Prince George's County, and Tolbert County, $10 for each property sold. So the change is pretty basic. We would like to go to a, from a fee of $8 for property sold to $10 for property sold. Any questions on that housekeeping issue?
Yeah.
Okay?
Looks like it section starts, there's a section before that, Section I, it says Garrett County and all counties, and it says for any date, one, two, or three properties sold now shall not exceed $10.
Yes, that says in Baltimore City.
But that says, that doesn't apply to...
That would not apply to Garrett County, because that's number nine in that section.
Well, it says Garrett County under I. About two, two. It says two I, it says Garrett County. And it says a fee there, and then above that, then you come down, the first line, it says two, more than four, four properties is three. So it seems like there may be a conflict there, I was just wondering.
Well, it wouldn't be if I ran it down here, down here.
If at one place it says 10 and 3.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I see exactly what you're saying, Delegate Biceau, and you're right. I think if I'm reading this right, and I may not be, except in...
I, I would just check.
Okay, I'll double check, but...
Yeah, that is confusing. I'm glad you asked that, because that is confusing, what, what exactly that means.
Okay, yeah, but the intent is to raise basically the $8 fee to $10. And I'll double check, $10. And I'll double check that, I'm sorry.
See, that says, I can understand what you're asking, and it says except in these counties for any date, it's not to exceed 10. So in those counties, then you would flip back to where it says this is what it would be, but it is confusing.
We will double check that one. So those are the two requests that the commissioners have. The third request is from the Liquor Control Board, and Debbie, would you like to present those?
Yeah, if you would come up, please.
Certainly.
Yep.
All these sales electronic, is that under this category here?
Yes. Electronic, yes.
Ready? Okay. I'm Debbie Allison, Administrator for the Garrett County Board of Licensed Commissioners, otherwise known as the Liquor Control Board, and the Liquor Board also has a few House amendments, like housekeeping, and we also have a creation of a new license. We had a request for a beauty salon slash barber shop alcoholic beverage license. It is a type of license that is, in other jurisdictions, the board reviewed some other counties and came up with a license that they would like to request. It would limit the quantity of alcohol served, and it has to be to a qualifying beauty salon or barber shop. The board's looking at making that so that the license holder can sell or serve not more than two 12-ounce offerings of beer or two 6-ounce offerings of wine for on-premise consumption by the salon customer. So that, that is the new license we'd like to request. And we have a couple amendments to our festival licenses. We found out this summer, the Chautauqua Victorian fundraiser ended up, we issued a wine festival license, and our existing wine festival license, it limits how many we can. Originally, we had one big wine festival in the county, but now that has become a beer and wine festival. So we want to allow a qualifying nonprofit to conduct a smaller type of festival or a similar festival. So the housekeeping changes would be, we just decided to take our beer festival license, our beer and wine, and our wine festival license, and increase the amount of festivals the board can approve up to. So we are going to go with up to four per year, and as well as the Deep Creek Art and Wine Festival this year, wanted to be a two-day event, and our license was only good for one day in the House legislation that we had. So we want to increase our days up to three consecutive days, and that is consistent with the state nonprofit festival licenses, and that, that's about it. So we don't anticipate issuing that amount of licenses, however, we want to, if a smaller nonprofit comes in, we want to be able to offer them a similar license. The difference between a nonprofit per diem license and a festival is the festival allows some sampling as well as to off-premise sales. So if there's a specific winery there that fundraising attendees want to take home, they can buy it for takeout. So that's, that's really all of our requests. Do you want me to read into the exact sections of the amendments?
No, I don't think that's necessary.
And I agree, I want to thank you guys for all the years of, each year, it seems like I don't, in my 23 years, we've always had legislation, so this is an easy year, so I want to thank you guys for always being willing to help us through it, and your staff's ability to navigate it with us.
So just for clarification, we're calling about three separate licenses.
Correct.
Over the four days or three consecutive days, if you notice.
Yes.
In one time, you still get a fourth day, but it can't be consecutive with three, is that correct?
It'd be for different events. So, yeah, they, they probably could. That's not likely to happen. It's probably, we'll probably end up with a, a small event. But, yeah, so if the, the big committee wanted to have four festivals in a year, the board would have discretion to issue four.
So you can have four festivals of three consecutive days?
Correct. Yeah, and that was to include the weekend, because the wine festival this year, they had a premium tasting Friday night, and then the main festival Saturday, and our license was only good for one day, and so we were just anticipating if there's some other type of event where they wanted to do something on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or Friday, Saturday, Sunday, just so we were consistent with the state nonprofit license.
They all say the same thing, so depending on what the bill director says, maybe we accomplish all three in the same bill.
We were thinking that. They're, they're all, probably were drafted by different legislative draft writers, so they all look a little different right now, but we had talked about that, to do like some type of a scale where the state license has, you can pick up to, you know, just have a beer license, beer and wine, or beer, wine, and liquor, and they have a fee scale, like one is $50 for one type of alcohol, 100 for two types, and 150 for three, if you want beer, wine, and liquor festival.
So you don't have it written in there, but you did say two 12-ounce beer and two 6-ounce wine?
Correct, yes. Yeah, I, I have the, my markup of it, but I know a legislative writer is going to scratch out some things, but I did create my own markup of it that I would present, and then let the draft bill writer put it in order.
You also have the fee structure built into it, too?
Yes.
And where you have like the three-day license have a different fee, or something, if you had one day, or each additional day, they cost more.
Possibly. The way the bill is written right now, the current, it allows the board to set the fee, so we set the fee in our local rules and regs. And the board also wanted to take into consideration if a retailer applied on behalf of a nonprofit for that discretion. So on our next update of our rules and regs, we would address those fees in the local rules and regs, and that gives us a chance to have the fees without legislation. Why is it doing it that way?
And I'd also add, thanks, thanks for the compliment, and added that it's always been kind of work with you, and you work with our staff people and the bill drafting people, so it's always been a pretty painless process.
Well, thank you.
Always trying to do everything we could do to accommodate your wants and desires with the commissioners and the License Evidence Association, our board.
Thank you. The board members could not be here today. I did invite them to attend, but they did not make it.
Thank you very much. And we know that you spent the rest of the year each time we came in here finding something for us to do.
Kevin could tell you, I have a little book that I just flipped through, I'm like, oh, I probably have one started for 2023 already. But thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Thanks for all you do and have done and do.
You're welcome. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Yes?
Yeah, I have a question on the first request.
Yeah.
Just as a question, a comment, not necessarily a suggestion, but it's, it's when you stayed there, that you're changing it from meeting once a week, at least once a week, to as necessary. That seems really broad. I mean, what, what if you would decide it was not necessary throughout the year, which we know is not going to be a fact, but it seems like it's pretty open-ended and pretty broad, and I think maybe that could be construed to be limiting public participation and public access to the commissioners with problems. I just question opening up so wide that gives any set of commissioners the, the ability to not meet whatever they feel they want to meet, you know? So it seems like there should be some requirement for public sessions, the public participation. I just, my, my thought process on that.
I remember way back when I was sitting on your seat, I think we had to come in every Monday for a regular meeting day. Then, not too long ago, we changed it to Tuesday, if I remember correctly. And then I thought we added, but if this is the present day wording, that you had to come in one administrative day a week, was that, was that written in there at one time?
No, this, this is exactly what's...
And I hadn't changed since then.
This was two...
It's best in my mind that we added that wording several years back.
This was 2006. This, the current was, article was written.
One little concern there, maybe we can get the dictionary out, see if we can come up with another word or something that allows you flexibility, but like it looks broad maybe, or whatever.
I, you see, just take a look at that, when we draft the legislation, maybe we can work together, come up with something that I think would not, if I'm looking at this and say as a member of the public, it looks like, you know, you really are, could limit public participation and access. And then commissioners have always been wide open and accessible, and so I...
I think, I think we would be open to change on that, for sure.
Feel that strong one, but, you know, if you're going to do the job, try and do it right, basically, it's 365 days a year, not sitting in here. I mean, you know, so the meeting considered has to be in here or somewhere else. I mean, you guys, I think, have done a great job, rotated around the community, and that's your regular meeting, and that's good, allows people the opportunity, might not otherwise have an opportunity to come to your meeting. Want to make sure we keep public session in here, that doesn't mean I have to be right here in this room, it could be...
Right.
Right. It hits the older community center, wherever.
I can certainly take a look at that and work with the, with the commissioners and see if we can...
This is the first time we've looked at it.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's a... It's, yes.
And as far as C is concerned there, I, we know, and I understand, when I was a commissioner, there, there are times when you can't attend for various reasons, and say you shall make, since you shall attend, I know probably every commissioner's violated that provision.
Right.
So I don't have a problem changing that.
Any other questions or comments on the submission of legislative requests?
You might want to reword that, too. I mean, I know what it said, but I think you can simplify and kind of, I mean, it's first I would add, too, each commissioner's appointed to specific commissions, boards, and committees, will make every effort to attend the one, the one and two, or something along that line, I just think maybe the wording...
Okay.
Says the same thing, I mean, it's just haven't had that time, much time to look at, but I think maybe we need, while we're doing it, look at...
No, absolutely.
...rewording something there, and C also.
Right, and, you know, to that point, just as a point of clarity for the public, because, you know, the question, well, why would they want to change some of these things? First and foremost on this one was to get to add in and codify that it's all right to meet publicly via Zoom or whatever, through what we just went through, because that was a big conversation. I know it was at the state level, and every county and town dealt with, does it meet the code to meet this way, or does it have to be a, everybody sitting in public? So that cleans that up. The other thing is, and I think Larry either dealt with this today or tomorrow, we all sit on so many boards and committees, there are times when they both meet the same time on the same day. Well, obviously, you can't be at both of them, so just trying to clean that up to say, okay, you know, there are going to be times, you know, and there's going to be times you're sick or whatever, but in this case, I think we were thinking of, like, Thursday, I have a chamber board meeting and a board of health meeting at the same time. Why can't be at two places at once? I know you got the same situation the next day or two as well.
I had one this morning where I couldn't go to both of them, and I have one tomorrow where I can't go to both of them, they're both the same time.
So it just, those types of things, when you're looking at, at this stuff, you know, to, just so people understand the thought process and the rationale trying, between trying to, to fix this. Any other comments or questions in general?
Just in general, we might have a special session to take us on congressional districts in the, I guess it'd be in the second week of December.
Sixth.
The sixth of December through whatever date. And then, at that time, we'll be taking up a bunch of details, probably, and that's anticipated to be a week. And then redistricting maps are coming out now for, for our legislative districts, and there's going to be a lot of changes with that. This is just general comments about going forward in this session. So we won't, we'll be taking up the mapping for the congressional, I mean, for our delegation, like general, like Assembly Legislative Districts in the first session of January, in the next session. And also, it's anticipated that the governors prepare a congressional map, the governor's preparing, he's created a nonprofit, not profit, nonpartisan commission to prepare the maps, and then the General Assembly, the leaders of the General Assembly are preparing their own maps, and they just came out with, with some maps that have like four different options, and so they haven't narrowed it down to find one yet. So there's going to be some changes there. I'd also note that there's going to be some huge changes going forward in, in the future years, because we're having a lot of changes in the General Assembly. In the House, Delegate Anne Pfizer has resigned us from the Ways and Means Committee, she's already resigned. Delegate McIntosh is chair of my committee appropriation, has announced she's not going to run again. Derek Davis, who is going to probably shortly be appointed as treasurer, maybe in this special session, is chairman of, is the Economic Matters Committee, so there's going to be some C changes in the, after this term, the next term coming in, there'll, there'll be a whole lot of new people to deal with, and so just wanted to mention that. We don't have any, I mean, there's some things we're looking at as, as potential legislation for the next session, but we're not to the point that we decided, we, George and I haven't met, and our Allegheny delegation hasn't yet taken up the, we have some requests from other people for bills, and before we introduce any stuff that they impact the county, we'll want to be able to mention that about anything that we've been thinking about, to get your input.
Keeping the pre-districting, I think, and then the county covenant, you all have to look at the configuration of the commissioner districts after each census?
It's, yeah, we've, actually, we're waiting to hear back from the election board now to see what, what, if there will be a change, yes.
If there's a change of a certain percentage of the population, then there'll have to be a change, and I guess the election board will let you know that.
Correct.
Yeah, I briefly talked with Steve about that a while ago, and at that time, I got the impression he didn't think there would be any change, but that was before the numbers came out, so, I mean, obviously, that could...
Another thing we'd mention is, is clear that there's one big, really big impact in, in our legislative district one. We've lost population in Garrett County, they've lost bigger population in Allegheny County, La Roya has lost population. The legislative district one that George represents as a senator will be moving much further east, and George and I are both not going to be around for the next term, and so, but it will impact to the point that Garrett County is going to be losing influence in the Maryland General Assembly, and the delegate district... And the delegate district looks like we'll be picking up part of Frostburg in the 1A that I represent.
That's what I saw, too.
I just want to thank you all for cooperation, working together over the years. And we all represent the same people. We all need to cooperate where I think that the people that put us in office. And I believe over the years, we've accomplished a fair amount. We've got a little over a year yet to go, one month, so we keep trucking for Garrett County.
Thank you very much.
You know, I just want to add my thanks to you all. You've been very, very cooperative with us and helped, helped me personally, both of you at times, and I appreciate that very, very much. And I appreciate it, all you've done for our county. And I thank you for that.
You know, we we talk often, especially at Mako, with Mako coming up soon, and I know we've mentioned it with you guys before, but I think people take it for granted. You know, the way we operate here isn't necessarily the norm across the state. And, you know, other districts, you have commissioners backbiting delegates because they want to be delegates, and you have delegates backbiting senators because they want to be senators, and you have senators backbiting congressmen because they want to be congressmen, and you have mayors backbiting commissioners because they want to be commissioners. And and oftentimes, they stifle progress because they don't want anyone else to get any credit for anything, and that's one benefit we have that I think we all take for granted, that here, whether by necessity or what, we all do work together, and it's been it's been refreshing. When we go downstate and talk about how we do things here, people do envy us in a lot of ways for how we're able to work with each other. And and that goes for the federal delegation, too, for the most part. I know they're a separate party, but they've always been cordial and have worked with us, and all the way down to the mayors and the town council members we have here. So we want to thank you all for being a big part of that and helping us out and being being accessible to us.
If I could, I just, another thing just came up, like I mentioned, you know, the new infrastructure bill coming out from Congress, Maryland looks like they're gonna get like $6 billion. And so I think we probably ought to be positioning ourselves to try and do as much as we possibly can to get some funding for broadband for 219 north to kind of push that on through. We need 220 further down, but other bridges and things you have, I think we need to just stay on top of that and see what we can do to try to maximize our opportunities with some of those federal funds that they're funding.
Absolutely. All right, anything else?
Okay, we got.
Well, you can. Thank you, guys, very much. Appreciate. Just a couple of announcements before we get to to comments. Our next meeting is Tuesday, no, that's today. Our next meeting will be the first Monday in December, which is December the 6th, and that will be here. Also, we have had several requests, actually throughout the years, but it has intensified recently, to look into the possibility of pursuing our own fire marshal. There's a there is a piece in the statute that allows local jurisdictions to do that. Many do. We currently do not, but we are looking into that, so stay tuned to see what might happen with that. And we did get a, an email request, and again, people can email, and now it's comments@garretcounty.org. We did get a question about state money to the county budget. The the real dollar amount for Garrett County from the state directly. Now, this does not include monies that flow to the county that doesn't go through our budget. So, you know, if the if the state gives money to the health department directly, or to the school system directly, or to anyone else directly, that doesn't flow through us, we don't have those numbers. And obviously, they do that. But the the dollar amount straight to the county coffers for our budget is $6,726,779. So that was a question that was sent to us, and that's the answer to that question. Once again, next meeting, December the 6th, here, 4 o'clock, and we now come to a time of public comment, or any comments? Yes, ma'am?
Um, just two comments, well, comment and a question. Thank you, first of all, for providing that money, that information on the dollars. That was very helpful, and I would very much want to give a kudos to Kevin for doing that, so thank you. My comment is, with the announcement of the request, the legislative request to the delegate and the senator, could you speak a little bit about the idea of going online for meeting, which I absolutely understand the need for? But one of the comments that I heard often, and I think I actually even shared it with you all, was the idea that when meetings are only online, there isn't a way to get public comment in the moment. And I just wondered if that was any part of your conversation? And then I do have one other question.
It is not part of the language in the legislation that we're requesting, because it doesn't doesn't really fit there. That's more of a policy than a legislative procedure, if you will. So that's how I would respond to that. Obviously, that's something that we tried to to work through, and a lot of opinion on that across the board. That's why we opened up GC comments. We tried to continue to provide an opportunity for people to send things. We did try, and I think we did, and if we didn't, I will stand corrected if anyone can can tell me otherwise, because I can't remember every meeting, but I think we answered all of the questions that were sent to us, or at least tried to address all the comments. Some comments didn't necessitate a response, just we want you to know this. So we did try to be sensitive to that as we went on. In talking with many of my friends throughout the state, I think everybody struggled with that. Some people were able to do it. I think you would get different opinions of whether they were able to do it well. And and some people that did it said they would never do it again, because it really, it made it hard to moderate the meeting. And I'm sure some people figured it out and did a wonderful job. But just in my conversations with folks, it was kind of all over the map. But that's an excellent point. And to the point that Delek Bites was trying to make, you know, obviously, if you get into this position or any position of elected office, you should want public comment and public discourse. And certainly, you want to have meetings, you know, the notion that, and that's why I tried to clarify that with talking about why we were trying to make some changes. It's not that, you know, you don't want to meet. You can't do business if you don't meet. You can't make decisions outside of a public meeting, and if you're not doing that, you're not doing the people's work. But you know, you shouldn't want to meet. You shouldn't want the comment and discourse with the public. And and how you put that in writing to get, actually achieve the spirit of what you're trying to achieve without screwing something up. That's the tightrope that you tried to to walk, so.
Would you entertain ideas on how to potentially do that?
Always, always, always.
Thank you. I appreciate that. My next question is, would you be able to give an update on the diversity committee and kind of where you stand with additional members and moving forward?
We actually, I just asked Mr. Knoll about that before we came out here today. So we we have several applicants for that committee. We we made a slight change to the structure of that to add another standing member, if you will, from another organization. We are leaving the application period open another, till December 1st? Yeah, till then. Yeah, till December the 1st. I'm actually pleasantly surprised at how many applications we've received or letters of interest. And then we we will appoint the other committee members in December to to roll out, to get started, January of '22.
Could you tell us who the fifth organization is for the Denny Committee?
The the added committee was the Garrett County N double A C P.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we have a motion adjourned.
Sub move.
Thank you all very much.
Tell Jimmy to come on in, Bill. It's a game to see, legit.
I think, yeah, legit.
I wasn't sure whether to thank you.
See ya. Thank you, ladies. And I'll send you that electronically. I don't know if you need it all, but.
I mean, once, once it's explained down to the essentials, I think, I think it'll be okay.
All right, take care.
Thank you. Anything else for us yet today?
Are we this all?
Yeah, let me make sure. Hold on. I think it is.